We were downwind and then they stayed with both families. Yeah, they had a really good experience and it wasn't really that super expensive. She would've stayed in Ann Arbor and if we were paying rent on an apartment for three months, we would've spent the same amount of money, you know? So, um, so that was cool. Um, my son's graduating. He's done, he's going to George Washington in DC, so he's excited about that. He's big into his thing, his passion is politics. And it's just, this is great. So what's new with you? Not, not to that extent. He'll, 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 he'll talk about, I mean, he, his analysis is really quite astonishing for a kid his age. So what's new with you?
I moved my youngest to Chicago for a summer last weekend.
Uh, yeah.
So she's sent for the LSAT.
Oh.
She's taking a class, the Kaplan class.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so she's had her first week of online classes and studying for the LSAT. She'll take it in September.
September?
Yeah, she just graduated from housing.
Wow, that's awesome. So where does, uh, where does she want to go to law school? She has a choice. Yeah, at Deloitte. Northwestern?
We'll see.
That's, that's an awesome school.
Yeah.
The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 7:00 PM. Secretary, please call roll.
Chairperson Sobolski?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Barberina?
Here.
Commissioner Greger, here. Trustee Bob Dorshavitz?
Here.
Treasurer Bob Dorshavitz? Commissioner Boyd?
Here.
Commissioner Berry?
Here.
Commissioner Itzel?
Here.
Okay, and we have the approval of this evening's agenda. I have no changes. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Boyd to approve the agenda for tonight as submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 15th meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Boyd to approve the March 15th minutes as submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the approval of the minutes of April 19th?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of April 19th as submitted. Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Greger to approve the March 19th minutes as submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And a motion to approve the minutes of May 3rd?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of May 3rd as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina and, um, and supported by Commissioner Boyd. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain from, okay, abstain from Commissioner Berry because he was absent. And the approval of the May 17th minutes?
Um, Mr. Chairperson, I have some recommended changes.
Okay.
Minor changes. On page one, um, I was at the meeting, so I, I'm sure it is excused that I was present at the meeting, so we need to change that.
Okay.
Um, on page three, section nine, um, the third sentence down says, "Planning Commission makes with the nonexistent infrastructure." I'd like to change that to say, "Planning Commission makes versus the existing infrastructure." And I've given Gail a copy of these recommended changes. And then the next paragraph, um, just to clarify, the first sentence asks that we insert the word forthcoming before roadway at the end of that sentence. And then in the second sentence, um, I meant to say, "Back in North Territorial," not Ridge. And it's possible I made a mistake, but if I did that, I'd like to change it because I meant back in North Territorial. That's it.
Any objections to those corrections?
No, I do have a correction as well.
Okay.
Just as Commissioner Boyd was actually here, I was actually excused on that.
Okay, all right.
I have a, I have an abstain as well, I was not at that meeting.
Okay. Any other changes? Are there any objections to those changes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of May 17th as corrected. Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Greger to approve the corrected minutes of May 17th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. An abstain, abstention from Commissioner Berry.
And Commissioner Itzel.
And Commissioner Itzel. Public comments? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on any topic that is not on the agenda?
One of the chairperson?
If you can come up to the, yeah, so.
I think it's all right, I'm gonna do this. Uh, item 10, is that an agenda item or is that a unfinished business? It's not an available business, it said unfinished business. Is that an item that needs to be followed?
That's an, that is an agenda item. Typically, we don't have public hearings on that, but because there's so much interest in this particular subject, we will be taking public comments. Correct, you have three minutes. Uh, well, not on the comments because we're still working through the agenda, but you're welcome to come back when we get to that part.
Thank you.
More, please?
Yes.
Having a hard time hearing all of you on your comments. There's a little problem with the microphone, you might have to hear the comments.
Okay, and then raise your hand. I'll try to do better myself, and if still have any issue, raise your hand and we'll see if somebody in the control room can control it. We can't control the volume except trying to move the mic closer and speak louder. Thanks. Okay, and so now?
There's another comment.
There's another comment? Okay, well, when we get to item 10, which is the Northville Downs of Plymouth PUD Development Plan, we're going to hear from the planner, we're going to hear from the engineer, we're going to hear from the township attorney, when, uh, and then we're also going to hear from the applicant. Were there any, were there any at the door? There should be some at the door, I see some people carrying something in. Okay? Okay, good. Uh, any other comment, questions? Okay, all right. So we don't have a formal public hearing, but we will be hearing from the public. So now we're at unfinished business, the Northville Downs of Plymouth PUD Development Plan, application 2478. And I will turn to Ms. Howe to give us the planning report.
Thank you, Chairman Sobolski. Uh, the project before you is Northville Downs of Plymouth Township, which includes, um, at the southwest corner of Ridge and Five Mile Roads, um, a proposed half-mile harness racetrack, approximately 4,900 square feet of grandstands for outdoor viewing, the racing building, which is approximately 23,000 square feet, a horse barn, um, that's just over 35,000 square feet. And the horse barn, um, is intended to, uh, contain the horses while they await the races. They will not be kept overnight, just want to make sure that we're, um, clear on that point. And the horses will be raced, um, May through September at this point. There's also just over a 3,000 square foot maintenance building, um, several parking and loading areas for the public and the horse trailers. And there's also the small trailhead off of Ridge Road and then the public walking path along Johnson Creek that is a, a public amenity. And also several recreation amenities on the site, including soccer fields and pickleball courts. So as the commission is familiar, um, the public hearing and, uh, recommendation and approval for the PUD option was granted by the township back in February of this year. And as such, the planning commission has been reviewing the development plan, the site plan for this project. And on May 3rd, the commission did review the, um, first iteration of this site plan. And at that meeting, it was tabled, direction was given to the applicant, um, regarding some of the specifics of the plan, the building elevations and such, and additional comments were heard by the public. So tonight, the revised site plan is before you for consideration. And this is a consideration of approval, approval with conditions or denial, but ultimately that is sent to the Board of Trustees. And, um, the board has the final say at a future meeting date, um, where they will be reviewing the final site development plan, the PUD contract, and also, separate from this, the community benefits agreement. So on page three of our planning report, we do outline the, um, the planned unit development process as a whole and the current step, the current stage that we're in right now. So there will be a future meeting with the Board of Trustees. Um, but the, the step tonight is just to review the site plan and to make a recommendation to the Board of Approval or Denial. Since the May 3rd meeting, the applicant has revised several items on the site plan and cleaned some of those, um, items up, including the, um, fire and emergency access. The, uh, approval, uh, report from the fire department is included within your packet, um, that all deficiencies have been corrected. Other aspects, such as lighting, um, have been addressed. In our report, we note that there's still a couple outstanding items, mostly related to landscaping, which we feel these are underlined in our report. These are relatively minor and we feel that could be handled administratively. It's straightforward, um, what needs to be included. So there are those considerations that we would recommend be attached as conditions of approval. But the primary aspect or element for the commission to consider tonight are the building elevations that have since been revised, um, in front of you. Tried to just provide the before and after since the May 3rd submission. Their current submission is, is the one that's included in the packet and available online.
So, sorry to interrupt, I'm, uh, behind you a little bit because the scroll, for some reason, the scroll is responding real slowly.
Okay.
Where are you at right now?
Um, just discussing the building elevations.
Okay, so I'm trying to stay in sync with you. It's just the scrolls, um...
On the, the current projects page, trustee Dorshavitz, if you wanted to pull up the elevation, that might be helpful, just so the public could see as well. I don't, I don't know if it's included with the, the site plan or if it's a separate link on the current projects page.
Uh, off the, okay, just a second.
I think, I think in that report was just the, the blueprint type of elevation and not a color rendering.
Not the color render, okay. Yep. That last one, the building render, mhm.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine. That's good. So this is the revised building elevation, and what they have done is extend, um, for a good portion of the building, the masonry component, all the way to the roof line. So before their, um, in the far right corner, you can see the, um, metal seam panels. Before, those were the majority of the building. And they have extended the masonry, um, and they've added a couple, uh, windows in that far right corner. They've also included the proposed signage, uh, Northville Downs of Plymouth Township, um, and some, um, horizontal elements, uh, with the stone. And if you look closely, you can kind of see at the corners, there is some relief where they've, um, uh, protruded the, the masonry a bit to create some dimension. Like the far left corner, um, you can kind of see from that angle a bit more of that dimension. So these elevations, you know, are for your consideration tonight. If you'd like to see additional glazing, um, or detail, uh, that would be appropriate to include in a motion of approval, should you be prepared to do so. And the recommended motion is on page nine of our report. And based on the compliance with the ordinance, uh, we do recommend the PUD development plan to the Township Board of Trustees for their final consideration. However, this is contingent that the outstanding items in the planning report be addressed, the outstanding items in the engineer's report be addressed, and that a revised PUD contract, which includes a provision for the community benefit agreement, um, be submitted to the Township Attorney, um, and that must be found acceptable.
Uh, is there a rendering for the barn, for the horse barn?
Not a render for the barn, just the building elevations. Sub of the black and white, um, that trustee Dorshavitz had up earlier.
There is a elevation in that deck of the barn. They have changed it to, to a degree.
In here, right?
Mhm, yep, this is the main, main building. You keep going.
Scroll down about another three pages. There you go.
Yes.
So versus the original elevation, you have that second floor dormer feature that's been added. And I believe the, uh, masonry along the bottom has been raised a little bit.
Correct.
Is, is the color of the masonry the same as the race building?
Um, that I'm not sure about. I believe their architect is here, though, to answer specific questions about their facade materials.
Siding, a masonry match, name, darling.
It does match?
Yes.
We can get into the specifics of it one. You're done?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the engineering report?
Yes. We performed a, a review of the site plans, uh, with respect to the, uh, engineering and found that, um, typically is the case, the majority of the items are typical general engineering comments. There are a few, uh, highlights I'll summarize from our engineering review letter. Eagle permits, uh, need to be obtained for all work impacting wetlands. A new master deed shall be provided, the proposed development, including a new legal parcel descriptions, um, and stormwater and sanitary sewer maintenance shall be included in that document. Based on the, uh, water main layout, we have, uh, following comments. The revised plans, uh, to remove references to the existing water main easement and label proposed 12-foot wide easement, um, in the demolition and utility plans. Based on the sanitary sewer layout, we have, uh, the following comment. The existing sanitary sewer is remaining in place. The sanitary sewer, uh, with its maintenance schedule and asphalt shall be provided, a new master deed. Based on the storm drainage and grading layout, we have the following comment. While the plans included pond and forbay exceed the current Wayne County Department of Public Services requirements, the county confirmed for additional potential capacity and stormwater pretreatment is required of them. Review and approval will be required from the county. Based on the, um, site plan, um, coordinates of the township will be required regarding the maintenance of the proposed, uh, asphalt walking path. Township will have the authority to maintain the pathway in event the owner does not maintain it, and the appropriate easements for it shall be provided. Regarding the traffic, uh, we have, per the attached traffic review memo, the racetrack falls below the land uses that have been previously considered for this location. The proposed development not have significant impact on the peak traffic conditions on Ridge Road and Five Mile Road. The, uh, our recommendation, uh, is for approval of the PUD development site plan conditional upon all the comments, uh, of memo, um, being addressed to the satisfaction of the planning commission. And, uh, we want to reiterate, the final engineering and construction plan approval is not recommended at this time. That's forthcoming on future plans submitted. The final engineering plans of this development are to be prepared in accordance with Township Engineering Design Standards, um, and details. And regarding our review of the traffic memo, um, we performed a review of the traffic study and found that, uh, the traffic study comparing the trip generation of the horse racetrack to a previously proposed land use for industrial park and manufacturing facility, um, the, uh, the timing and for the events of the horse racetrack, uh, is found not to coincide with the standard 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM weekday commuter, uh, peak hour, and most trips, uh, generated, uh, will be during non-peak hour times. And the impact on the traffic, uh, from the proposed race, uh, racetrack who fall below the land uses that have been previously considered for this location. And we concluded that the proposed development would not have a significant impact on the current traffic conditions on Ridge Road and Five Mile Road.
So where is that in the report here? Because I, you kind of went back and forth here and I want to make sure the audience can see it.
We have our engineering review letter and a separate attachment in the memorandum, uh, that's entitled, uh, Northville Downs at Plymouth Township. I believe you have it right there, that's it, right there.
Right.
That one is our staff review of the, uh, fishback, uh, report that was submitted in the official package.
That concludes your report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then we turn to Mr. Bennett, who is the Township Attorney, to talk a little bit about, um, the, um, state gambling laws. So if you could lighten us.
Article four, section 41 of the Michigan Constitution was approved by the voters as, as an amendment to the Constitution in 2004. Article four, section 41 reads in pertinent part, "No law enacted after January 1, 2004 that authorizes any form of gambling shall be effective without the approval of the electors voting in a statewide general election and a majority of electors voting in a township or city where the gambling will take place." This means that the only valid laws that permit gambling in the state of Michigan are, one, the three casinos in the city of Detroit, two, Indian tribal casinos, three, laws that were enacted prior to January 1, 2004, four, laws that are approved by a majority of the voters in a statewide general election and in the city or township in which the gambling is to occur. This means that legislature passed laws without the approval of a majority of voters in the state of Michigan are invalid. The gambling laws that were enacted subsequent to January 1, 2004 include the internet sports betting and poker set forth in MCL 432.301 at SEC, which was enacted in 2019. The reason that this was allowed is because the legislature provided that the gaming location is considered to be gambling or gaming that is conducted in the internet gaming operators casino located in this state. The laws that were in existence prior to January 1, 2004, which were unaffected by Article four, section 41 of the Constitution, are as follows. Horse racing law of 1995, recreational card playing at senior citizen housing facilities, bingo or millionaire parties, and charity poker falls under the scope of millionaire parties, lottery games authorized under Michigan statute, league bowling alley is not exceeding $1,000, redemption games, which is mechanical, electric, or manual amusing devices involving prizes that are not cash, and casinos authorized by initiated law one of 1996. Casinos are authorized if all of the following criteria are met. The applicant proposes to locate this casino in a city where the local legislative body enacted an ordinance approving casino gaming that may include local ordinances governing, governing casino operations. Two, that the applicant developed into a certified development agreement with the city. And three, that the applicant or its affiliates have a history of or a bona fide plan for investment in the community involvement in the city where the casino will be located. Important in this consideration is that city is defined by that initiative as follows. It has a population of at least 800,000 at the time a license is issued, is located within one, within 100 miles of any other state or coun, country in which gaming was permitted on December 5, 1996, and had a majority of voters who expressed approval of casino gaming in the city. According to the 2020 census, the population in Plymouth Township is 27,938. Thus, under initiated law one of 1996, the Michigan Gaming Control Board would positively deny any application for installing a casino within the Charter Township of Plymouth under the criteria stated above. Please note that this criteria is not limited to the Township of Plymouth, it is statewide. Thus, both Michigan Constitution and initiated law one of 1996 prohibit the operation of a casino in the Charter Township of Plymouth. The only way a casino would be authorized in the Charter Township of Plymouth is if it were approved in a statewide general election by both a majority of voters in the state and a majority of voters in the township. Any other gambling would be illegal, within the township is illegal. The penalty for gambling is set forth in MCL 750.301. Any gambling that is not explicitly authorized by any of the above statutes constitutes a misdemeanor punishable by imprisonment for not more than one year or a fine of not more than $1,000. There's not going to be a casino in Plymouth Township without statewide election approved by every, by a majority of voters in the state of Michigan and in the Charter Township of Plymouth.
Thank you very much. And the applicant is here? And who's going to lead off this presentation?
Hi, Bill Ebert, the Honorable Representative for the Northville Downs at Plymouth Township Racetrack. Are there any questions from the board at all?
Well, do you have any reaction to the planners' report, the engineering report, or the attorney?
Uh, as far as the engineering report, uh, our drawings are within 90% completion. They will be, uh, fully complete and submitted, uh, from our PEA group. GAV Associates is almost complete with their full drawing set as well, so those will be submitted, uh, for final review, and we will pick up those comments that you had mentioned.
So you have no objections to the comments in the planners' report?
No, not at this side.
Well, perhaps we can talk a little bit, well, but before we get into that, does the commission have any questions regarding what he has just said before we move into the renderings?
I have a question on the site plan.
Sure.
So there is an area on the site plan that says, um, uh, I'm trying to find it here, it's, uh, future, future parking or something to that effect. Why would you need to reserve an area for, uh, parking spaces in the future if you don't have any, uh, plans to expand this facility?
That would simply be overflow parking.
Okay, so it's not, it's not the addition of, of parking spaces?
No. No, that would be special events parking, something like that, Fourth of July Festival.
Okay, well, Bob, does that answer your question?
It did.
Okay.
Um, as far as mention of the pickleball court, is that open to the public at any time, or is it certain hours, or do you have to be in a league or a membership? How does that work?
We were, we were contacted by a local pickleball expert from Plymouth Township who had requested that they have the ability to do similar to what the Plymouth Rain has requested, to kind of take control of that location under a, uh, shared services agreement with us to kind of control the leagues or activities that go on there. Uh, it's going to be a seasonal thing, and I think the details along with those soccer fields in the Plymouth Rain are yet to be worked out, you know, based on how it comes. But we see that happening a lot like the soccer team, finding that local community club that wants to be in charge of it and then work out some type of shared service agreement with them.
And that would be located on the infield as well?
The soccer fields would be on the infield. We have the apron space, which would be on the east end of the facility. Uh, if you can zoom in there, I think there's about eight courts, seven or eight courts in there.
I can't, I can't hear, what? Sorry.
On the north, on the east end of the building, right there, just right of your cursor.
Can you move it up, move it down a little bit?
Soccer fields are going to be on the infield. The pickleball courts right now are, are planned for just to the east of the racing building. So if you go to the racing building, you can see that little square, there we go. And that's what we're going to call our flex space. Sometimes it'll be used for pickleball. We've had other people, we had three-on-three basketball tournament guys calling us to see if we, they've got space to have three-on-three basketball tournaments, all sorts of different recreational things. And I think the pickleball guys understand that it will be available to them when we're not doing other things and available to others when pickleball's not, you know, in season or whatever that would be, so.
So the general public would be able to access those courts?
Oh, they'll be open, uh, as for how those, that agreement, it'd be like the soccer field. We're not going to just leave the soccer fields for anybody to pull up and go play soccer. We're going to have an agreement with the community organizer or organizers for that, for that location to set up specific times for people to come do that, whether they require them to join a league or just maintain that during the hours they want to use it, we're going to work those things out with that group, so. I would expect the general public would be able to use it, for sure. I, I don't think that our, our goal was ever to exclude anybody from playing pickleball, but having somebody kind of control that like the soccer field is what we're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions on that part of it? Okay. All right, and, uh, Bob, can you bring up the rendering of the main building? All right, did you want to tell us a little bit about some of the changes you made in the, uh, building?
Uh, I'm sure, I'm Neil Valentine with GAV Associates. Uh, the, um, I believe it's the east end, there was some question about a surplus of metal siding being somewhat blank, so I made it out of masonry, I'll break, and we're going to attempt to relocate the signs from the current facility, and then we're going to add the verbiage of, uh, at Plymouth Township in a script type font. Now, the far right where there was, there's still this metal siding, we added four windows that would, um, two would be exposed to the upper level, two, I think, and they had locations, so they would, they wouldn't be visioned by us. Um, then there is what people call the barn, it's the horse stable. Like, it changes to be more of a profile of a barn, even though it's, to me, you will say barns, people have a farm, so it's the horse stable, it's, um, they're multi-use when there's no horses.
What kind of uses would there be then when there are no horses?
Uh, yeah. We're going to have thirty-five thousand square feet of covered pavilion space that we'll be able to utilize when we're not in our racing season. Um, waiting to find out what the opportunities, you know, present to us, and we'll have it available, whether or not it's used for other things, it'll determine what comes, what it comes of, but it'll be available for other activities.
Do you have some ideas of what those activities might be?
The pickleball guys in the winter time, they've already asked, you know, the, you know, that kind of stuff. So when we're not racing live, if there's an opportunity for them to go inside baseball camps, things like that, indoor, just indoor activities that somebody can utilize that facility for. Yeah, art fairs, we've had tax shows, trade shows, you know, swap meets, all sorts of things at our other facility that we've incorporated in those things in the past.
So those horse stalls that are in that barn area, they're easily removable?
Yes, the ones we have are easily removable.
Okay. Other questions on this building or others that are on the site?
You don't have a colored rendering of elevation of the horse barn?
No, 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 I don't.
Okay.
We don't have a color one, we just have the profile, black and white, it just, timing one.
Colors of the masonry are the same, will be the same. And the vertical siding would be the same, there's no flat panel siding. It's, uh, vertical, they'll give the impression of, like a ship lap or tongue and gills type wood.
I have a question about the signage, your icon that sits on the race building. Laura, do you think that is going to, um, fit our ordinance on signage?
No, it's likely going to be larger, uh, but as a PUD, you can, uh, extend some flexibility with that, given the size of their building.
Are there any colors on the barn, on the horse barn, that don't match the racetrack building?
Not, not proposed, no.
Okay.
To keep it uniform, it, it would, you'd want it the same. If you wanted this barn, like, you'd make it red, but it might be a bit too, too bright.
If you can't repurpose the sign on the existing building, will you duplicate it?
Uh, I mean, a smaller version?
I'm not sure about that, but it would, will it look something like what you've proposed here, what would drastically differ?
Yes, because that's, that's been your sign for many, many years.
Okay.
Tradition of it.
Sorry, Becky Klein with PEA Group, just wanted to remind everybody that that signage will not be visible from the roadway as you're driving along, you'll only see it as you enter in and turn the corner on Technie Drive, so that signage is non-conforming, and, you know, we, we would write that, that particular size and location into the PUD agreement, but, you know, it would not be in the public's eye as they're just passing by the site.
Would you have a monument sign near the entrance to the facility?
Yes, there's an existing monument sign at the entrance, um, already, and it just says Ridge Five Corporate Park on it. Uh, that is going to be refaced, it'll be the same location, the same size, just going to change the panels out so it says Northville Downs at Plymouth Township on it. And, uh, again, the color scheme will be similar to what you're already seeing.
On the, on the, um, the main building, I'll call it, the racing building, I think there is an improvement, and if I can see it properly, it's a little bit difficult on the, on the rendering, but you did put some layering on the corners, I could see it on the far end, as, as the planner had suggested in her report.
Correct, it's hard to see in a rendering, or
Right.
Almost impossible in a two-D drawing, but it's, the corners are projected out like pile-assers or piers on a building.
Have you thought of emphasizing perhaps the entrance to the building by putting another, maybe two, two, uh, on either side of the main door, we won't have it up there, but having the, uh, some sprandled windows that would call attention that that's the main, uh, entrance, and also breaks up some of the boxiness of the building?
I think the main entrance is obvious with the canopy, the drive-through, it's, it's a significant amount of glass. It's, it's more than you see on the new Bosco building on Haggery Road.
Other questions on renderings on, on any of the buildings? Okay, well, you can have a seat, and I'll hold an informal public hearing to get some input from the, from the public that, uh, came to visit us today, which we appreciate. And again, as I indicated earlier, you're limited to, uh, three minutes of time, you can line yourselves up there, and, uh, we ask you to be clear, concise, uh, cogent, and civil, and, uh, you address the commission with questions, and then when we're all done, uh, we'll make notes of those questions as we move along and, uh, present them to the applicant or the planner, whoever can best address those, uh, questions. And, uh, feel free to give us your name and address if you so desire, if you have a complex name, it would help our, our, uh, recording secretary if you could spell your last name. Okay, with that, we'll begin.
Good evening, Howard Hammer, H-A-M-E-R-I-N-K. I can certainly comply with your wishes, I do that on a routine basis. Um, my question is one to the engineer, because I'm going back to the PUD hearing, uh, that I, I presented at. The question was, the traffic study that was done for the previous zoning of that property, I believe was done in two thousand and sixteen, is that correct, uh, Mr. Engineer?
I believe the data report we reviewed is February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Your review, or the, the actual traffic study that was done?
I would give it performed, uh, this week.
Okay.
Report, but, uh, we compared the, uh, the, uh, studies from February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, uh, with the additional twenty twenty-one traffic study performed by Goyen.
That was for, uh, the, I think, the original development that was proposed.
The original zoning, that's correct. So my comment is, being a resident in that area, is somewhere along the way, some sort of access egress, it's a nice site plan, it's got a lot of nice features, the question is how do you get there and how do you get out? And the, the problem is, you've got a two-lane road. You have a, access coming out of the freeway. Those of you that don't live on the western side of the township will not be victimized by this whole process as much as those that do, and those residents are going to have to make a decision on how to respond to this plan, uh, in their own time, and what they plan to do in the future if they want any changes in this. But as far as I can see, the traffic situation, I've not seen it monitored by the county, typically you'll see monitors on there coming, the number of vehicles, et cetera. Um, I'm not sure anyone's going to be walking along the creek because of the garbage truck traffic and the truck traffic and the new development of the warehouse, uh, area across the street there, and there's no public sidewalks anywhere along Ridge Road, and Beck Road would be hazardous to anyone's child or any group of individuals trying to negotiate that street. So I suggest that somewhere along the way, someone needs to look at that intersection and develop some sort of left turn and side lanes, and it certainly would be well within the, uh, authority and perusal of the developer of the property and the, uh, soon-to-be occupant to take a look at making those improvements to the roadways.
Thank you very much. Someone else?
Hi, my name's Bill Pine, I live in Trailwood. I've spoken with Dennis a couple of times about concerns around issues around the periphery of what you guys are responsible for. I'm not sure if I have you to thank or someone else to thank for, for you doing what you just did, thank you whatsoever to the casino. There is some still lack of clarity around whether or not there's a gaming facility that's something else, not a casino, and if you can clarify that as you send whatever recommendations you send forward, which I assume we're going to do, uh, to the board. Because, you know, words, words can be used in such a way that, you know, we can comply with the law and still have the things that the community is concerned about. So, you know, you're the lawyer, we did a very nice job, thank you, but I would urge you to put together something very specific that you send forward to, uh, the board on the premise that you guys approve this, that says, hey, these are the things that you can and can't do. I was actually going to come up here and tell you an old Navy story, to talk about you guys being held accountable if things went south, but you took care of a lot of that, so I'll save my Navy story for later. Uh, but please, be specific on the stuff that you send to the board, so that the board realizes the constraints that they have placed upon them from the folks that they work for, us.
Okay, thank you. Someone else? Yes. Yeah, you, you can just line up or whatever you want to do.
My name is David Maxine, and I live west of Beck Road, off North Territorial. I'd like to know how many of your members who work us over here live that close to the site? Is anyone living there?
What's the question?
Okay. How many of us, how many of the board members live near this area?
How do you define near? How do you define near?
Drive down through the road every day.
Between Beck Road, North Territorial, and Farbar Road.
Well, we live just as close, but in the, five of us.
Okay. My point, and you should go there.
One, two, three, four, six, sorry, six.
In the subdivision, right at the corner. People coming to that site, they're going to take Five Mile Road or North Territorial. The choice will be North Territorial. You don't want to cross the railroad track and go Five Mile Road, two lanes. I get out of North Territorial to North Territorial, and sometimes I have to wait ten minutes a day. How much more traffic you think we're going to get in there? Is there any plans to change the goal? And who's going to pay for it? You have to think about that very serious. My daughter had an accident getting off to North Territorial about ten years ago. Fifty miles an hour is the speed limit. So think about your kids and the population over there, how you're going to get to that site? And I can tell you, I guarantee you, the route will be through North Territorial. You're going to have the highway, and you're going to make a left, you're not going to cross the railroad or any of that very busy roads over there. You're going to go left to North Territorial at fifty miles an hour. So please, think about your children, okay? Yes?
My name is Maya Thalk, I live in Hulenoak, San Francisco. I have few questions, and maybe the questions which is not very clear to me. And I want to know how many races would be done in one week? Or, in a day, how many races would occur? That's number one question. Of course, um, he has pointed out in the traffic, I live on the North Territorial in the, in that zone, and there is a school there behind, and there is quite a bit of traffic when the school is either closed or it is, you know, like the, the, uh, terrics are dropping the children over there. And the children start walking sometimes on the North Territorial, and we might have seen it. So that's one of the questions there. I didn't hear from my girlfriend about, when he has talked about the casino, I didn't hear anything about the racetrack. Is it family or not? And whether it is out or not.
We'll ask that question when we're done with the public hearings, but we'll, we'll address that.
Okay. And is the building or this, this is the site plan, is the building is just entering right now, or is the building exist?
Well, the building doesn't exist.
It does exist, okay, so that was the rendering.
Right.
So how many horses would be there in the barns? And, uh, like I asked the first question, how many races each day or every week, what are the, uh, at what time the races would occur? So those are my questions, and actually, I don't have the package which I can read and then discuss more, but these are the, uh, primary questions which I like to get the answers.
Okay, mm-hmm, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Adams, I've lived in Plymouth for twenty-five years now, and I also live in close- I've lived in Plymouth for 25 years now, and I also live in close proximity to this development. I'm not here to oppose horse racing in general. That's your livelihood. That's what you need to do. And it appears that Northville Downs is your last place to race your horses. It appears that being in this industry has gotten significantly better with the recent influx of tax revenue from the online gaming industry. So you need a place to continue your livelihood, and I'm not here to oppose what you do. I oppose having this racetrack in my community. It is a gaming place. There is betting going on. It does fall outside what you've said legally from a casino perspective, and it is legitimate, but I don't want it in my community. When was this property purchased by the Carlo brothers?
I think it was at the end of last year.
Okay, so they purchased the property the end of last year, and the PUD was not given until February of 2023. Why wasn't that PUD? I mean, it must have been a done deal in when that property was purchased. Otherwise, the Carlo brothers would not have purchased that property if they didn't know Plymouth Township is going to create a PUD, right? How can you purchase property if you don't know it's okay to do what you want? Secondly, we have a master plan for development in this township. It's on our website. I do not see any of this racetrack that meets with any of our goals in the master plan for the township. And as a, as the trustees and the planning commission, you're all bound to follow by that master plan. The PUD states, it says, "The township has identified the undeveloped property located south of Five Mile between Napier Road and Ridge Road, as shown in Figure 26, as a suitable location for a high-technology park," which from that sign it was expected to be. "The Johnson Creek and a sand of mature trees run through the approximate center of the site. An effort should be made to preserve and incorporate these natural features into the development of the site. Therefore, development under a PUD is strongly recommended. It could be developed for a high-technology park with a mixture of other support uses, such as upscale retail and restaurants, live work units, or recreation facilities." I do not consider this a recreational facility. This is a gaming facility. And then to the traffic study, how many vehicles will be estimated having every right? I didn't see that. I think it's just a general comment.
Your three minutes is up, so if you can wrap it up, you can come back after everyone else has had a chance to comment and, and continue with an additional three minutes.
Okay, my last statement is, in the Michigan Farm News in February 2022, it stated, "In 2021, Northville Downs greeted roughly 250,000 customers." This was down 14% from 2019. You take 250,000, you divide it by 365, that's almost 700 people a day. What I heard in the last meeting was 200. So I'm not sure that the traffic study is a valid study, and so I'd like confirmation on that. And then I'd like to see the business plan for how this organization is going to be profitable. And I'm assuming that that's public information, that they submitted a business plan to you, and that it should document what the revenues are going to be and how they're going to make the revenues and how they're going to keep this facility up. And then my final comment was, you talked about the water. I'm assuming from 2012.
Can you address that to us? Because when you turn away, we can't hear you.
Okay, sorry. He's the engineer.
And Jenny, you have to wrap this up because I've let you go way longer.
I just have one more comment. The water, is it already extended to that site? Because in the 2012 plan, the water was not extended that far. And so that is my question to the engineer.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Dale Bernhardt. Been a resident since 81. Help me understand the PUD. Does a PUD overrun existing zoning? This started out as industrial, and then it went to pink in the master plan 2025, which is the intellectual park. And now we did a PUD. It, this horse track does not meet the industrial or the pink, MITC. So does a PUD override existing zoning? Question number one. The traffic study, they're looking at peak hours, okay? It's already a mess. It's not going to impact peak. You can't move anyways. What this does is it fills in all your downtime. There is no time that you're going to be on the bottom roads and not have any traffic because you're going to be having anywhere from 200 to 700.
You have to address us because when you turn away, it's hard for us.
I'm sorry, I'm supposed to look at you? I am really sorry.
Well, all of us.
Also, oh, look underneath there. The county still has to approve something, right? How do you approve something with the county, Wayne County, still not approving? And I think that has to do with water or sewage or whatever. I urge you to hold off on any approval and recommendation to the trustees until you get that information. My other question is to the gentleman lawyer here. Indian tribes seem to have certainly ways that individuals do not. How do we know that an Indian tribe cannot come in and claim some property and say, we want to put in a casino?
Do I answer that through the chairs?
You can address that later.
We will address it when we get to.
My next is, how do we restrict, restrict the size of this site? In other words, no more buildings. This is the size you get, and you're not going to build any more on this site. Is this something that you guys can address? Let me see, is there anything else with my five pages of notes? I'll do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Maitland, I live in Hanover Lakes. My backyard is North Territorial Road. My wife and kids, they love horses. However, I don't mind them either. However, I just, I was in the Northville Downs a few years ago, and I'm just going to say it, I mean, there were a lot of degenerates that were in that building. And that's, that's out of mind. There will be gambling. There's no doubt about it. For on horse racing, whether it's on horse tracks that are in other parts of the country. That's what they're there for. And, you know, that's, it, it, people can do what they want to do. As far as the traffic study goes, everybody in this room knows you have North Ridge Church right down the road. And on Saturdays and Sundays, there are multiple, multiple services. I go to church, not that church, but I do go to church. And when you combine that with the 700 or whatever people are saying, it will be paid out. Recently, there have been some accidents or for whatever reason, I do insurance for a living, and I'm trying to figure out why there's so many runway accidents and so forth. But the other day, there was four or five fire trucks, ambulances. What happens when that happens? When people are trying to get in and maybe the church is getting out, and now you have this added on, it will be an absolute mess. And you probably will find somebody will die that hasn't, that shouldn't have died because they couldn't get there in time, and then the township gets sued, and you're dealing with that. It's not your fault, but you're still getting pulled in. Probably Sam Bernstein or somebody will be calling, or his son. So I think that it really needs to be looked at. Northville Downs is the one that they have now. It's a dump. I mean, has anybody been in there lately? It's, it's, it's a disaster, and is, is the question that I have is, is North, the developers are saying, well, you can sell this and build some very fancy houses in Northville. It won't move down the street to Plymouth Township. I've been in there twice in the last eight years, and it's been probably four or five years, and I certainly would not go back now. And this, I, and I'm concerned that that's, it's going to look great for five years. I've got kids that play up there with rain. They're actually moving to Detroit City, but, so soccer's big for us, and that's kind of the neat thing to do. But I, I just, and I play pickleball, but I, I just, I'm really concerned about this, and that enough thought has been going on. And also, it started off as a, as a tech club, and the traffic, the traffic will not even, it'll be absolutely horrendous at certain points in the day. You know, I always know when the home Michigan football game, I go to Michigan football games, but the things that I don't go, you know when it's a home game. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mary Pine, we've been living here since 1978. I would like to at least thank you for finally trying to be transparent in some way or address concerns. This is the first time we've seen this happen. The concern about the casino could easily be addressed by absolutely putting in that there will never be anything resembling a casino there. The thing I'm puzzled by, I don't know if this is close enough, is the hypocrisy of reading in the blog, this that just came out, that Spar's is, the florist, everybody's seen it, is, has been bought, and this body, 501, recommended to reject the plan. And, and all I know is what I read in the article is that people didn't want disruption of their neighborhood. They were worried about traffic noise. Tonkish Creek, Tonkish Creek, sound familiar? And if you're saying it's because this isn't a PUD, a PUD is just putting lipstick on a pig, and it is zoning, it's rezoning. So that's one thing I want to comment on. The other thing is, this has been handled so poorly. We've had decent discussions with the Carlo brothers. One thing I know from them is that Northville Township, I'm not handling that microphone. Northville Township rejected their offer to be a Northville Township. That should be food for thought for all of you. Then there is a playmichigan.com. You can look, sorry, you can look it up. You can look it up. It's from January 20th, 2023. This is why people are thinking this. So it's hard to trust everything that's been said to us because PUD is sort of a trick. So what other tricks are going to pop up? It says, "Included in the proposal is a 54,000 square foot gambling casino adjacent to the track pending legislative, legislative approval for operation." So, go further in the article, it says licensing approval from the Michigan Gaming Control Board. You, you don't know down the road what's going to happen. You're going to say, oh, no, no casino. What's, what's going to happen down the road? Well, for instance, there's a Michigan Supreme Court case right now for people like me who have been severely injured in a car accident. We're talking about DUI here. And they pulled out, constitutionally, people were entitled to their benefits prior to this new law. And then people have died now because the legislator carelessly made a new, a new law. And now people have died. Now it's going to be settled in the Supreme Court. So I don't know how easily I trust everything you're saying here. The, the additional issue of it being environmentally sound is, what about the air quality? What about the air quality for soccer, walking, pickleball, concerts? What about the fact from the land, land from the landfill? What about fireworks? They're going to be going out near landfill where there are gases.
We're beyond the three minutes.
So was everybody else. So, so anyway.
Not everybody else.
Anyway.
Ma'am, not everybody else.
It was also, it was also, it was also stated, Mr., no, you're, you're discriminating against me.
How?
Because other people were allowed to go over.
One person.
No, not more than, more than one person.
And you can come back for the additional three minutes.
They're saying this is an entertainment value for all of Wayne County. Have you invited Wayne County to our community?
Do you remember we asked someone to be civil?
I'm done.
You're not being civil.
You're not being polite to me, and I'm struggling.
Oh, I'm so, I'm really sorry about that.
I'm struggling with this mic. No, you're not.
Oh, glad you're a mind reader. Okay. All right. All right. First, I got to see if anyone else wants to talk that hasn't spoken, and you're more than welcome to come up.
I agree.
Okay. I apologize if I spoke loudly to you, but I did ask you politely, you could come back for an additional three minutes. You have to follow the rule. Okay.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Greg Burick. I live in Fox Point, just south of North Territorial. I have just two points. The first one is, I'm very concerned about the casino because I know that it's very possible that the Indian nations could, could authorize or, or get interested in that, and there could be things that occur, or we would end up with a casino in our backyard. But the other one that I was more interested in is with the traffic study. Has, has the addition of the new charter school on Ridge Road and the traffic from that been included in the overall traffic study? Because if it has not, then the traffic study is clearly incorrect.
We'll, we'll check on that.
Thank you.
I'll ask the question. Anyone else that has not spoken yet? Okay, anyone, oh, okay.
Hi. My name is Shirley Peters. I live in Eaton Estates, right off of North Territorial. And traffic is one of the conditions I worry about. But more than the conditions of traffic, I wonder what we're doing to our community. We are, the ambience of our community is being tainted by bringing this racetrack to our community. I grew up with a father who raced horses. I grew up watching Northville Downs when I was seven years old. And so Northville grew up around Northville Downs. So they had to accept Northville Downs. I'm not sure we should be doing this to our community without asking everybody who lives in the township, is this what you really want? Is, do you want it? I know we can't vote on it. Apparently, apparently that's not going to happen. But I'm very concerned about the type of gambling that will occur. It will occur. I don't, it'll be under the carpet. It will be one way or another. I lived with it. So I am saying to you, please be considerate of what we're doing to our community because we have other things that are more important. We talked about the possibility of having a soccer court on the railroad, on the track. They operate from April to September. When do our kids play soccer? Same time. When do the kids play soccer? On the weekend. When do you race? On the weekend. So there's, there's so, it's such a vague description of what's really going to happen. And how do we protect it from not being a casino or gambling not happening there? If you walk into Northville Downs any day of the week, because my husband and I walk into Northville on many occasions, we go through the building just, you know, get a drink of water, whatever. It's very, it's despicable. I'm sorry. And people that are there, somebody loses money and they're angry, and they come out of there angry. There's so many things to be considered. I just wish we'd be more open about what's really going to happen there. I mean, I hear little vague things. I don't hear anything definite.
And we'll try to get some specifics.
That's, that's really my comment.
Okay. Thank you. Any else, anyone else that has not spoken? Okay. Then we'll go for a second round. Ash, again, three minutes.
Let's just take a couple of seconds. Very briefly, Ms. Adams talked about the business plan for the Carlos. I'm pretty sure they have one. I talked to you, Bob, two months ago about a business plan for the township, and I haven't seen anything. So for the record, could you please write in something about requesting a corresponding business plan for the township? So it's clearer as to what the benefits are going to be. Now financially, we don't get any taxes. You have breakage fees of a couple hundred thousand dollars. Police department might have to hire another fellow. There will be other public services, which to me sounds like a wash at best. Typical business plan, you're going to have an exit strategy if things don't go well. Typical business plan, you're going to have an exit strategy if things don't go well. And that may exist, but we haven't seen it. So if you could put that in the review, we appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Doesn't make any sense, Bill.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, again, it's Dale Bernhardt. Whatever the current hours, we, we know that this is going to be seven days a week, and right now it's slated for 11:00 AM till midnight, every day, 365 days a week. Does Northville operate the same hours, or are these extended hours?
I can quickly say, I understand that is the, that is true, there's no, no expansion, but we will ask the applicant to verify that.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to thank everybody here, really all valid issues and questions, and I thank you all for coming. When do we get answers to these questions? And we would like those answers, hopefully, before you do any recommendation to the trustees. Is that a possibility?
Well, typically, we make the decision tonight, we get the questions answered. I mean, some, some questions we already know, we've asked those questions in the past as they move through this process, but we'll ask them again, because obviously not everyone has followed, you know, the, the progress of this request. So we'll get those together for you today. But again, we're here primarily for the site plan.
I understand that.
So, you know, we've gone through, and I, I will ask Ms. Hall to go through the PUD again, so people really understand, you know, how we got to this point. We're really kind of past that point, because it's already been submitted, our recommendations have been submitted to the Board of Trustees, and they've made a decision. So unless they're wanting to...
Unless something was missed, you know.
I didn't catch the part.
Unless that was, unless that was missed. But again, we, we have concerns, certainly with the, the current site, but future also. And we have a valid question about upcoming casino and possibly Indian, a tribe coming in. I would hope that we have that answer before you make any recommendation to the trustees.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Anyone else who has, wants a second round? Go ahead, come on. Okay, well.
Excuse me for that.
That's okay.
Did you say you are here tonight to approve?
It didn't, I don't know what we're going to do, if we're going to approve or disapprove, but we will...
I'm just saying, if you approve this without solving the roads problem, you're going to live with it.
Well, we're going to talk about the roads.
Because you're committing a crime, and somebody will die on those roads. You parents, you think about your kids and your family members. If somebody getting killed on those roads, and it will happen, it will happen, I guarantee you. I get out on North Territorial three, four times a day. And I don't know if any of you experience that. You said you live around there. I live right behind the church, the late of Good Counsel, that's more better. So I want you to think about that. You resolve that problem before you commit to anything. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
I forgot to read into the record.
Oh, yeah. Anyone else? I have one, we have a letter that we received that we're going to read into the record, but before we do that, anyone else? Because I will close the hearing. Okay, you're up for number three, I'm going to give you number three last and final.
I would like to just add to what Dave said. You've got kids being picked up for soccer, there's going to be drinking. I can tell you, I was an extremely coordinated person before I was so injured on Beck Road, being rear-ended. No soccer player is going to be able to ever play soccer again if they have the kind of injuries I have. I've got a third vestibular deficiency in my left ear, I've had a brain injury, I couldn't process my vision right, it's still a very weak system, my balance is very bad. So what Dave is saying, even if, even if someone doesn't get killed, my life has been ruined by my inability to be the person that I used to be. It's a very serious consideration that Dave brought up, and I think it needs to be addressed.
Okay. All right. Here we go. I'm not going to, we didn't really formally open up a public hearing, because it really wasn't a formal public hearing, but we'll post further comments, and we'll read, ask the secretary here to read the one letter we did receive.
This is a letter from Ryan Schultz. He's the director of Oak Haven MHC. Oak Haven MHC, located at 14401 Ridge Road, Plymouth, Michigan, is writing to express our strong opposition to the proposed Northville Downs development. Oak Haven MHC is home to 140 manufactured homes and over 200 residents. Given the close proximity of our community to the proposed development, we are concerned about the noise, traffic, ridge road upkeep, and lighting impact that such a development will have on our community and its residents. Ensuring that our current and future residents have a peaceful and joyful living experience and allowing them quiet enjoyment is extremely important to us. The noise, lighting, traffic, and event parking associated with the proposed development will create a nuisance to our residents and will impact their right to quiet enjoyment. We also believe that the development of a horse track at this location would possibly deter future individuals from considering our community as a place to reside and could impact the value of our residents' homes. We are asking that you please consider our community and residents when making this decision. We feel that this development will negatively impact the residents of Oak Haven MHC, as well as the residents of Plymouth Township's quality of life, and we ask for the township to vote no to the proposal.
Okay, thank you. And so Ms. Hall, I ask you, we've covered this before in previous meetings, but as I said earlier, many of these people weren't present at that meeting or unaware of it. And so if you could just walk us through again, the, the PUD process, how we arrived, that this was an appropriate way to go with the PUD, and what we're, you know, the planning, the point was brought up about the creek, you can talk about the linear park that's there and potential sidewalks.
Yes, happy to. I think if we could go to page three of our report, it does have a flow chart that just contains the process thus far. But to, to back up for a moment, the, the planned unit development, the PUD, is a overlay in a sense, the underlying zoning stays the same, but this allows for some flexibility in the zoning code. And most communities have a PUD. Most are more flexible than Plymouth, Plymouth Townships, in the sense that the townships can only be proposed on land that is commercial or industrial. So you have to have that underlying zoning first, either commercial or industrial, and then the PUD can be proposed. And the PUD is a, is a tool to allow for uses that maybe aren't currently contemplated under these zoning ordinance, because zoning ordinance is an evolving document, and it can't, it can't be a complete catch-all. So the applicant applied for the PUD option back in January, and the Planning Commission then held the first meeting on this project on February 15th, and that was the public hearing. That was to determine, does this project meet the eligibility principles of a PUD? And there's eight of those. And that was a rather extensive meeting in which those eight criteria were evaluated and found to be met. That was a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, who then, on that second square on the flow chart, on February 28th of this year, did grant approval of the PUD. So now we're in that third square, which is flushing out the site plan. And again, that's a recommendation to the Board of Trustees for their final approval. And that would go hand in hand with the community benefit agreement and the PUD contract that spells out some of those additional amenities, such as the recreation fields and the use of those. I believe Township Attorney Kevin Bennett can discuss the impacts of the, of the land in terms of a casino, but I, I would say that any future changes to this PUD require the township and the applicant to start at the beginning of this entire process. It's not something that is done administratively. It requires the full process to start over again.
So would that include the addition of a, of another building?
Correct. Yes. Any, any changes to the site that are not contemplated as part of this PUD, start this process over again as an amendment.
So that, that answers one of the questions that was asked. So, so that's helpful, that's good to know.
So there would be another public hearing notice, it would go through the same process that has been going on since January of this year?
And I think a good example of that, so, you know, sort of an educational process for, for everyone is, there have been a number of PUDs used in the township. One of them is the Resort at St. John's. And that's how the hotel building was put in, they're proposing some townhouses to be put in, they put in a, I guess what you'd call it, an additional event space, banquet space. Every time those had to come before, they had to go through part of this process, because it's a contract between the township and the owners or the developer of, of the property. So there's a, a prime example that it has to come back. You know, we've had all the questions, so...
I'm really sorry, normally PUD goes with a housing, and I, and I understand that generally doesn't go with an industrial.
But it, but St. John's is, is the example, that's why I use St. John's as an example. No, it is not.
There's going to be housing, so...
Oh, yes, there will, yes, now, but I mean, I thought you were referring to a whole big subdivision.
That area.
Right, right, right.
And I think the PUD is appropriate for that, but the, the industrial, the PUD does is wipe out all the requirements from the industrial, because there's noise requirements, there's dust requirements, everything that this horse track is really is going to be including.
All right. Well, that was your one question, so we'll get that answered. So do you want to answer that question?
Certainly. So there are performance standards that are in the zoning ordinance, and there are performance standards that are in the Code of Ordinances relating to noise and nuisances across property lines that apply to every parcel in the township, regardless of the zoning or planned unit development, and those are enforceable.
And can you talk just briefly about the, the linear park there that includes that creek and how it ties in with Northville?
Yeah, so...
It's a little offside, but, you know, that question came up, so...
Certainly. If we wanted to take a look at the site, along the western boundary of the site is the Johnson Drain. And in 2016, a portion of the land, a sliver, if you will, along the Johnson Drain was zoned as public land so that it would be not built upon and used for public enjoyment by the township and its residents and neighboring communities, in the anticipation that eventually it would hook up to, or connect to, the trail system that is part of Northville Township. And as the properties north of Five Mile get developed, that that trail would be connected. And so as part of this project, the applicant is installing a completely accessible trail with three different lookout points along the Johnson Drain and along, along that, that linear park, if you will, out to Ridge Road, where there's a small parking lot, a trailhead for users to enjoy that natural area.
And when did we set that up again? It was 2016, is that what you said?
The land was set aside, designated for public use in 16.
Right, to, to protect the drain.
Yes, and as part of the previous industrial park for this site that was approved, the Ridge Five Corporate Park, the applicant was making a contribution to the develop, future development of this, but they were not installing the path or making those amenities themselves. That was just a straight, straight site plan. This is a PUD, the applicant is proposing that as a public benefit, which the township would not gain unless otherwise under this PUD.
Then I'll turn to Mr. Bennett and talk a little bit about gaming, casinos, what's horse racing. Are you able to kind of define and categorize some of those activities?
Yeah, first of all, with respect to Indian gaming, I have to say that I am not an expert on Indian gaming. I've looked into it a little bit tonight while this, this discussion was taking place. It appears that Indian gaming is something that occurs on lands that are tribal in nature, and that would be an issue that is entirely independent of whether or not there's a horse track on that property. That is not governed by United States law. So I, I think that the fact that the horse track is there has no bearing on whether or not there would be an Indian tribal casino there. With respect to horse racing, horse race, the horse racing law of 1995 was enacted prior to Article Four, Section 41 of the Michigan Constitution. Horse racing law is legal in Michigan. However, any gambling that takes place at a horse track must fall within the confines of the horse racing law of 1995. The only other possible gambling that could take place on that property would be bingo or millionaire parties, and those are governed exclusively by the Michigan, Michigan Gaming Control Board. If the Michigan Gaming Control Board authorized bingo or millionaire parties at the horse track, that would be within their exclusive jurisdiction. All the other legalized form of gambling do not appear like they would take place at, at a horse track. Does that answer your question? So let me ask a follow-up question, and I know you're not an expert in this area, but the question was asked as to whether, could, could a tribe later acquire this property and put a casino on that? And you could ask, I think you could ask that same question about any parcel anywhere. So there's nothing, that doesn't really seem like that would be, you know, a, a risk. Yeah, what, the limited amount that I know, and I got to speak very carefully here, because I, like I said, I am not an expert by any means on this topic. If there's an Indian reservation, the United States does not have the power to preclude the Indian reservation from operating a casino on the reservation. And as far as the map I'm looking at right now for Indian reservations, the Indian reservations look like in Michigan, they are limited to central part of Michigan. I do not see any signs of an Indian reservation in Wayne County.
Well, certainly it's a complex part of the law, and...
The Detroit casinos are not Indian reservations. They were authorized by Initiated Act or Initiated Law One of 1996. Basically, the Constitution of Michigan grants the city of Detroit the power to operate three casinos, that were in, were in existence at the time of the amendment to the Constitution, which was 2004. There's not going to be any more casinos in Detroit. So Kevin, one of the other questions, and something I've been sort of, you know, thinking about as we've been up here, is that would it be possible to incorporate within the PUD, PUD contract, a restriction on the, the applicant applying for expanded gaming or gambling at any, you know, at any time in the future, next 20 years, they, they can't do it, so we just secure it?
I think that's possible, yes.
That might go a long way, and close that one down.
Could you repeat that question? We can't hear you.
So the, the question I asked was, because, so the PUD contract is in negotiation, and will be, and that, through our, our attorney and theirs, and the question is, could we put a restriction within the PUD contract that would...
within the PUD contract that would bar the applicant from applying for any expanded gaming capabilities, you know, for the next 20 years or 25 years or in perpetu, I don't know if you could do it in perpetuity, but so that would address the issue of, you know, we're coming in and gonna, you know, do a bait and switch in five years and try to put a casino in there because we really need to put this to bed. You know, this myth out there about 56,000 square foot casino is total nonsense. I don't know who wrote about it in some online article, but it's nonsense, and it needs to be put to bed. And if, and in order to win the confidence, if we need to do something like that, then maybe that's the solution. Would that work?
May I rephrase my answer to that question?
Sure.
It could be included in the PUD contract that there will be no casino or other illegal forms of gambling. Billionaire, millionaire parties and bingo games are authorized under Michigan law, and they're under the exclusive jurisdiction of the Michigan Gaming Control Board. I'm not sure we could include a provision in the PUD contract for something that would .
So long as.
Contracted Michigan law.
Yeah, no, it's totally fine. I mean, don't take away my bingo, whatever you do. But yeah, that's fine. I mean, obviously can't be in conflict with state law, but I'm just, I really think it would be important to the community if we can, if, you know, if we can, you know, collapse this issue.
Yeah, it's really a non-issue, both Initiated Law One of, I think, 1996 and the Article Four, Section 41 of the Michigan Constitution preclude the formation of casinos, not just in Plymouth Township, but in the entire state of Michigan. The only way that that could happen is if the casinos approved by a majority of voters within the state of Michigan and the Charter Township of Plymouth in a statewide general election. And that is not limited to Plymouth Township, that's the entire state of Michigan.
Uh huh. But there's no harm in restating the law within a PUD agreement?
I have no problem with redundancies.
Well, Bob, at whatever resolution, if we decide to move this forward, we could recommend that to the Board of Trustees to examine that.
Is that the right, is that how you would like to see it?
Well, that's a discretionary consideration for the commission, but it's certainly something you could do.
Okay.
All right.
What other questions?
I have the traffic, quite a bit of discussion about the traffic. So one of the key ones, I think, is this traffic study that has been referred to. What area did it cover? How, what were the boundaries of that traffic study?
Well, I was prepared to answer the vehicle question that came up, the vehicle count. The boundaries of it were covered by our staff and summarized in our report. So off the top of my head, I'm not sure I have that answer, the boundaries, but the standard guidelines would have been followed and verified that would be typical to a use like this for the report. I can compare the traffic counts in comparison to the, what was proposed for this site, for the manufacturing facility, if that helps to answer the question. And I can say that there are significantly fewer traffic trips. For the peak hour, the racetrack has 311 trips less per hour than the manufacturing facility, and on a weekday, there's 1,789 trips expected, fewer than the previously proposed development.
So is it fair? Sorry, I'm curious about that data point that was mentioned by one of the speakers of 250,000 visitors. Is that accurate? No idea?
Higher.
You don't know where that number came from?
It came from the Michigan State Farm, whatever. I mean, it's online, I can send it to the.
He's the owner.
So.
How many visitors a year do you think you get?
It's kind of put a number on, but I would say somewhere between, I don't know, between. I mean, it's hard for me to say an exact number. I left the facility in about an hour before I showed up here. There was about 90 people in the building. There were 45 cars there.
Yeah, I mean.
On Saturdays, there's going to be a couple hundred cars departing out at six o'clock at night during live racing. There's going to be a couple hundred more cars departing out. There was a question about how many races per week.
No, no, we're going to get into that. Because otherwise, I'm going to lose my train of thought here.
Sorry, sorry, Dennis.
... reference visitors to the extent that I was after that article. Doesn't necessarily mean cars. It means there could be more than one person traveling in a car. You just said.
I was trying to tie that to the traffic study.
I know, I know, but I have a way to get to that point.
Okay, that's fine.
Sorry, Kevin. So getting back to the original thing is, I have to rethink what my question was. So here it was. Is it fair to conclude from what you have in your traffic study that the racetrack will generate less traffic than if that original development of, you know, high tech or whatever was going to eventually be there would have generated?
Again, it's significantly fewer trips in the peak hour as well as per day. And we also concluded in our analysis of the traffic study that was performed by Fishbeck. In our comparison, we found that it falls below the previously, you know, considered use for this property and would have no significant impact on the current conditions of Five Mile Road and Ridge Road. And furthermore, there was a question regards to the future developments regarding the charter school. I can say that with regards to any future developments, they would have to do a traffic study based on previously approved or existing developments. This study considers what's approved and what's in place, so there'll be a study for that as it comes along, and any recommendations for improvements will take place at that time. I can also say that there are planned improvements by the county. They're county roads, so the county would be proposing some improvements to those roads.
So you're talking about the charter school that's being, that would be proposed on Ridge Road?
Correct.
Would there be a traffic study done there? Who would require that? Because folks here may not realize that, you know, the charter schools that exist here do not come before the planning commission. We have no authority over them. So whatever goes in there, we don't have a say in it. So who would require a traffic study there? Would the county do it, or the state, or?
There'll be, there'll be some plans submitted, and we will conduct a review. There is some state level, and we would provide review comments. We would, my understanding is that we would require a traffic study for that one.
And you would require, so do you have any approval process in the charter school? We're getting off base here, but that's an important.
Well, from an engineering standpoint, I can say that we will review the plans, and we will make our recommendations for requirements. I can't speak to what the other departments would contribute.
Okay, well, that's, we're getting a little far afield on that. So if the applicant or representatives from the applicant, these next set of questions due, I think you're the best source of this information, and then of course, the commission can join in once you're all up here. But let's get something out that you have covered before, but again, not everyone was at that initial meeting, and that is, can you tell us the hours of operation, how many races you do, you know?
Sure, we're open every day, seven days a week. We open up about 11:30, 12 o'clock. The first post on the east coast is around one, so we give everybody about an hour before the first race to kind of prep to see what they want to do. This week, we run, we're going to run 22 races. We're going to run one card tomorrow night with 11 races and another card on Saturday night with 11 races. So anywhere between 20 and 25 is about the average number we're doing right now of races per week live on the loop, on the track itself, and that's in the calendar window.
And how many horses are housed in the?
So with 10 races, there's approximately 90 horses that would show up. There'd be somewhere a little less than that, between 85 and 90. We don't have more than nine horses in each race. Each race is classified differently, so not all of them have eight, some of them have six and seven, but not less than six, but never more than nine in a race.
And you see no conflict with the horse racing operation and obviously not going to be playing soccer in the middle of the race, but any of the other?
No, absolutely not. We, you know, again, we're going to have racing on that track tomorrow night, starts at seven, 7 o'clock. The horses will be warming up around five. Same way on Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, big open field full of grass, and there's no horses on the grounds to be out there. So I think there's a way to put it all together. Again, we're going to work with those community groups that want to use that as extra space, and we hope that it gives them a little bit more of what they're looking for.
And Laura, there is water present on that site already from the previous development?
Yes, this site was cleared and utilities were, the site has been improved.
What about the, oh, sorry, Dennis.
No, go ahead.
What about the question of the, kind of the co-mingling of, you know, youth soccer players with adults that are drinking and gambling and.
You know, I don't really, you know, we did this in Northville for a number of years before the parks, you know, started developing in that neighborhood. Again, if the Plymouth Rain doesn't feel like it's a place they want to use, we've had football flag football, these contacts, we have all sorts of different groups for that open space. So yeah, we've considered, we'll consider anybody that wants to use it. If they don't feel like that's the environment that they want to come to, please, don't come.
So that, you do that in Northville?
We have done that in the past. Northville uses our soccer, our infield for their youth soccer. Probably hasn't happened in about the last 15 years, but yeah, certainly for a number of years. The sign still is hanging on the fence for the soccer entrance, actually, so yeah.
And we don't require a business plan because the success of a business that wishes to locate or expand in Plymouth Township is not part of our mission.
Yeah, not to mention it's proprietary, and go knock on a business door and ask for their business plan. Good luck with that.
So that's beyond our wheelhouse, if you will. Other questions from the commission?
Commissioner, I, as part of our packet, we actually got the traffic study from Fishbeck on the Northville Downs proposal. I would like to, I don't know if it's posted on the township website, but if it isn't, I'd like to have it posted because it provides a lot more detail. It provides a lot more detail on the determination that this racetrack will generate substantially less traffic than the traffic that would have been generated by the original business park, which included eight separate lots, eight separate businesses. And if you can believe their numbers, and I'll leave it up to you if you believe them, it generates, according to their numbers, about a tenth of the traffic that those eight businesses would have generated. Also want to remind everybody that this was and is currently zoned industrial. It was proposed to go technology and research in the 2025 master plan, I believe, but right now it is industrial, and I believe that one of the sites was being considered for a manufacturing plant. So this is a different use than industrial, but there could have been eight individual industrial facilities on that piece of land. And on that basis, the traffic study that they came up with says that because of how long the racetrack operates each day, and the different hours that people come in and come and go out suggests that the impact on Ridge and Five Mile would be very minimal. But I'd like to see the numbers posted so that the people can look at it themselves and draw their own conclusions.
I think it's in the, isn't it in the?
It is in the packet.
Yes. So it is on the website, Tim.
Okay. So you can. It's closed together, but there are two different memos.
Okay. So that's under the agenda and packet for today's meeting on the website.
Yeah, it's under.
So you can go to the plymouthtwp.org website, and on the left, there's something called agendas and minutes, and you can choose the planning commission, and there's a listing for tonight's meeting. It has the agenda, then it has what's called a packet, and all of the materials that we're looking at here are posted online in that packet, in which you want to go and find the memo from Fishbeck, F-I-S-H-B-E-C-K, and read that for yourself on the traffic study.
So one of the citizens asked if you had applied to move your business to Northville Township. Can you address that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. We scouted out many different sites when we started to relocate, and that was one of the locations that was in our pack of six or seven, but we had never had any conversations with Northville Township along the lines of.
You never owned, you never owned property in Northville Township and applied for?
No, ma'am.
A PUD or?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
And Northville did not kick you out of town, so to speak?
That's correct.
Right.
That's correct.
The property, as I understand it, was, you basically lost a lease on the property because there'll be a different kind of development there.
There's a new development that's coming in there, yes.
So you never owned that property?
We never did own that property.
You leased it from the city of Northville.
We leased that property from another individual who decided to go ahead and sell the property, put it on the market and sell it. Yes, that's correct.
Another question was about, it was stated that there would be no sidewalk along Ridge Road. I believe, and Laura, if you can confirm this, that the plan calls for an eight-foot sidewalk along the entire property along Ridge Road? So that's a consideration. Is, Laura, is that correct?
Correct.
But long-term, where would it connect up?
On Five Mile?
So it would basically start right about here and continue up into Northville Township?
And then Five Mile?
Along Five Mile?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions from the commission or questions that the public had asked that I may not have noted in my comments?
Oh, look at this, it brought up an old De Roco mail.
All right, any further questions or discussion amongst the commissioners?
I do have a question for you, for the township attorney. Going back to the exceptions for bingo and millionaire parties, it's my understanding that if one of, if they want to hold one of those there, they have to apply to the gaming commission for a special license for that day.
Yes, those are limited to, I'm not sure about bingo, but millionaire parties are limited to charities, educational service-oriented, religious charities who have to get licensed from Michigan Gaming Control Commission. It does come before the township board for approval, but the extent to which the township is permitted to approve or disapprove is limited to whether or not the applicant is an actual charitable organization.
Thank you.
So they used to have like these poker room, like a docks, stuff like that, but that's, that's all, that would not be a possibility?
I'm not saying it's not going to be a possibility, but it is, it's regulated exclusively by the Michigan Gaming Control Board.
Yeah.
There was a reorganization by Governor Snyder when he was in office of, I guess, charity poker. It was formerly not under the gaming control, was under the Department of Treasury, now it's under the gaming control board.
Remember, the bowling alley had those too.
Yeah, do they still have those around? I don't know. Yeah.
And you can, of course, do it on your sofa at home. All right, I think we've exhausted discussion on this, so what is the Commission's direction on this? I think we're ready for a motion.
So, but the engineering report did not recommend...
Subject to, they have to fix the deficiencies that they have found. That's true of what we do for many of the things.
Correct.
There are some issues in your report as well. They have no objections to them, they just have to put it in writing, draw the pictures, do all that. I guess we could, I don't know, Bob, you're the trustee representative, if you want to suggest that we put something in about, in the PUD contract about the gambling or gaming or whatever you want to call it.
As part of the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, what do you think?
Yeah, I think we should.
I mean, you guys can...
Yeah.
Mull it over at your end.
Right, exactly. Then, if the Board of Trustees wants to do that, then we've made the recommendation that we should.
Okay. I think we're ready.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of the PUD development plan to the Township Board of Trustees for consideration contingent that, A, the outstanding items in the planning report are addressed, B, the outstanding items in the engineer's report are addressed, and C, a revised PUD contract, which includes a provision for a community benefit agreement, is submitted to the Township Attorney, which is determined by the Attorney to be acceptable for the Board's consideration, D, that the landscape plan is reviewed administratively, E, that relocating the Northville Downs sign from Northville to this site and of Plymouth Township is approved, and that F, included in the PUD contract is no expansion of gaming, but that we refer to the Attorney Kevin Bennett for the exact wording for that.
Is there support for that? Okay, moved by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Neger to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, subject to set conditions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Yeah, well, we're done with public comments, we're done with this issue.
He said, he said, I don't know, if it's real, you have more traffic than this program. I dispute that 1,000 percent. I'm an engineering manager, I develop standards and calculations, I give him a credit for knowing what happens, doing some things, but he knows nothing about my tech, not on one, I don't know what's going on, we don't know what's happening. He said, yes, number two.
Yeah, you know my suggestion?
We work on form now.
Yeah.
It's a different world.
Yeah, my suggestion would be...
So, you have to dig that and you get into consideration.
Yeah. My suggestion...
You have to know what he's talking about.
I move to adjourn.
Yeah. I would suggest you take those comments, take those comments to the Board of Trustees, get your packs together, and do that. All right. Is there a motion for adjournment at 8:53?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Issel to adjourn at 8:53. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we adjourn.
Good judgment. No, no, I don't know. No, no.
And I thought your comments were very good, actually. Your comments were, your comments were very...